At this point, um, is there any agenda additions or deletions? I have one, uh, because we got a letter from some folks on East Street, uh, from Bump Road South concerning, uh, they understand that they're having a, um, reduction in the speed limit headed north from there. So other folks are now asking to have that end of the road done too.
Like I suggested at the last meeting?
Uh, I think they referenced that in the, in their letter. Alright, um, is there a motion to add that?
So moved.
Second? Hold in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we can put that on the highway real quick. Alright, um, is there any other agenda additions or deletions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I'd ask for a motion with regard to the July 13th minutes.
I didn't look them over. I had to approve them as presented.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Is there a second to it? Is there any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, warrants are floating and drifting. I think you have them down there. Uh, we don't have any guests unless Bill wants to consider himself a guest. Um, any public comments? Don't see any. Um, let's go to road commissioner to report. What do you got for us?
Uh, just for an update, we've been working on replacements of Culver's East Temis Road, and we just completed that road. It should be real good shape for many years come, other than minor maintenance of the grading and roadside mowing of it. Um...
I've been driving down there. It really looks nice. Very nice.
Oh, I'll pass that on to the crew. Um, then, uh, roadside mowing is continuing. I've had numerous calls about the junction of Walker Mountain Road and 133 at what I call Chapman's Corner.
Right.
Um, I, I've talked to the district of, in Castleton, and they let me know that Vermont's come back for one pass on the roadsides. Um, that's not going to solve that situation. However, we're in that area. I didn't know if the SLF Board would be along with us just taking 20 minutes with our tractor when we're over there to mow that corner back some.
We have done that in the past.
But that's not the, the answer to that. That's not going to, we can only reach so far.
Yep.
Um, it's going to help some. So I'd like to know what the SLF Board's pleasure is. And actually, what I'd do is go over with the, the small truck for flashers and a sign on the back of that, because that is a busy, busy corner, 133.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we can take a half hour or 20 minutes just to...
We put a flag on, flag, you know, a sign.
It's almost better than nothing the way I look at it.
Yeah, we'll sign it up above, and then we'll actually have one on the truck in the road for people headed south on 133. And like I said, it takes about 20 minutes, maybe a half hour, just to do that corner. Um, just, I mean, people are, it's a safety thing.
Well, certainly is.
The state needs to do something to that corner. Of course, you have cattails and stuff like that in here, so it depends on if safety, or wetlands, or cattails overrule the safety or what, but it needs to be taken back much as we can.
I think that's important to notify the state that we're going to do that too.
Okay, I'll let Brian know if Katie can make a note of that. We can let Brian know we're going to try to take that back some. And if they could actually, I don't know if they can handcuff back in there, the state, I don't feel sorry to do the, the handcuff.
Now, that's, that's a situation, uh, and I totally agree. We should do something before somebody gets hurt. But theoretically, the state should be able to come in there, and I know they're tight, just like everybody else. But they should be able to come in with a situation like that, because that is dangerous.
Yep.
And they should be able to do something. And they shouldn't be dumping that on the towns, in my opinion.
Okay.
But, uh...
So long we're out there, we'll address it somewhat the best we can without spending a lot of time there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just for safety measures and that part.
Yeah.
Um, we have, the voters approved 80,000 for paving. Seeing that we're not going to be getting any grants that, down the road here because of the COVID, I didn't know what the board's pleasure was of, if we want to use that 80,000 to do a little bit in town. And with that being said, we can't do where it should be up on like Walker Mountain, where the roads really tore apart, because it'd be, uh, uh, only a quarter of a project as far as, it wouldn't be a return on investment for the town. My thoughts are, we have, the plan was in the past is to keep some of our good roads good. And my suggestion is to SLF Board, for the taxpayers, this section of Middle Road on, from Route 7 on the south end, up to, uh, Balch Adams's old house, or Eddie Baker's, there's a break in the road there. That is the worst section of Middle Road there is. Um, to upgrade that section, which would cost about, roughly in that area, that's my estimate. Um, I can talk to the paving crews and get some bids on it if that's the board's pleasure, or we can just hold off and wait till next year and do that, put that funding with the other. Um, but the thing is, we need to keep our good roads good. And this is a heavy-traveled road with log trucks and everything, garbage trucks.
Also, keep in mind that yes, you have the $80,000 for the resurfacing article that the voters approved, but you also have $95,000 in resurfacing reconstruction. So you have a total of $175,000.
Correct. And my second suggestion is, I'm not sure how far that would go, is if I have them put bids together for that section of the road and possibly, like, Al Freesia Road is starting to break, and when that goes, I've been there all my life, that really goes and goes fast. It's not really bad shape right now. Um, and then actually price out Moulton Avenue. But that's just, I just throwing that out as suggestions, because that was on the 10-year plan of keeping the good roads good. And with not much money to work with it, it's not worth it to go into the heavy-end projects and only do a half job.
For me, I think that, uh, you work these roads all the time.
Mm-hmm.
So, as long as we are spending taxpayers' money, uh, that were voted on for the purpose of fixing our roads, blacktop roads and stuff, I think that should be left up to you if they're, I don't, you know, we look for a recommendation from the road commissioner in most cases.
That's my recommendation on that. However, like, on the north end of Creek Road, that should be done down to Norm, past Norm Bowens, right at the farm at Norm Bowens, but that has a break there. But the thing is, that's going to require more finance revenue to fix that, because it's all got to be re-ground. Where these other projects don't have to be re-ground, you can actually do the...
Essentially, this is like what you did on Coal River Road, top, new top coat on.
Oh, we did two-layered there. Did your base and top. Coal River and North Schuessberg we did last year.
I think I would say to let Cash get with the favors.
Right.
And get, uh, some bids, and go as far as you can. Uh, I do agree, the Middle Road out there, especially out here, is getting kind of raggedy. My thought would be to start there, and then whatever, wherever you can go from there.
From there. Um, there's only one bad spot, and that's right over here, actually by Condon's Farm. There's only one bad spot in that road right now. So it's not really bad as far as, but if we let it go, we're going to have more problems. And it's going to cost a lot more.
Is it okay with the board if we say, uh, to Cash as the road commissioner, to go ahead and get some research done, in other words, bids, and come back as soon as possible so that we can get something done this year before the...
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would put that in a motion that, uh, we let Cash use his discretion to, uh, do what we think, what he thinks needs to be done.
And I'll bring it to the board.
I would be good with that.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, real quick, Cash, uh, that addition to signs and stuff, um, first of all, we have this already, uh, for the north end of East Street. North end, I mean, between the bridge and Bump Road.
We're talking about speed limit.
Yeah, yes. Speed limit signs. Uh, and we discussed doing that at our last meeting, and this is the official, uh, we voted on that, right, to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
From Bump Road north to the Covered Bridge.
Did you want a copy of the letter from that lady, or...?
Um, yeah, real quick, please.
After working that road up there, um, I'm not the one who actually plows it and stuff like that, but working in summertime with that road, there's a lot of people jogging on that road, just like I explained last meeting, on that lower section from the Bump Road South, um, bicycles.
We used to ride horses on it.
And horse, actually, there's a couple people that ride horses on that. And that's, it has some curves in it and hills and not much of a curve.
Not real drastic.
And actually, I drove through there, I, I brought her up to 35 miles an hour coming up to Alderman's, through that, even that straightaway, and I'm like, this is pretty fast.
Let me read this letter. This letter is in reference to the minutes from your meeting on 7/13/20 and the East Street speed limit. We would like to say that as residents of the south side of the East Street, as in Bump Road South, we definitely would not complain that the reduction in the speed limit from 35 to 25 extended beyond Bump Road to include the entire length of East Street, uh, as Cash Ruane suggested. This road is frequently used both, uh, by both adult and children walking, both with and without dogs, bikers, and horseback riders. There are some straight areas of the road, but also many blind dips and corners. And yes, we do have had close calls pulling out of our driveway because of the obstructive view and speed of oncoming vehicles. If the speed limit is dropped on East Street, we feel it should be the entire length of East Street, not just a small section. Uh, of course, and Cheryl Gibor, I believe that's how they say it.
So, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, if, if, if we follow through with this, I'd actually entail adding Haven Hill with that, because that's even a narrower road down, up through there, from the Wallingford Town Line off. It's just a short distance.
What is, uh, their speed limit in Wallingford that come out that road, do you know?
I want to say 25, but don't hold it to me.
Oh, let's, why don't we investigate that?
Right by Haven Hill, I think it's 45, change into 35 real quick, on the main highway going into Wallingford.
Right, but we're talking about Haven Hill, the dirt road.
The road itself?
Yeah, the dirt road. I...
For some, I want to say it's 35.
I want to say maybe 35.
But I'm not sure.
Why don't we, I'm not sure I can...
I'll check that out.
But for right now, um, we will take this up after, you know, at the next meeting. It's, it's just going to be up to the community center to, to add this section from Bump Road South, as well as possibility of Haven Hill, which is the southern end of the town.
To talk about it again?
Pardon?
To talk about it again, or to have an amendment?
Do the amendment, just like this. If the board is willing to change the full length...
We haven't posted that yet, have we, the...
No, we can't for 60 days after we...
No, I don't mean that. I mean, the posted the change. Has that been out?
No, that has to get signed.
Yeah.
But if you're going to change the whole entire length of the speed limit, it'd be better to do it all at once, because we have to play the Rutland Herald.
Alright, that's what I was getting to, Katie. Thank you.
That makes sense. Thank you. So why don't we, um...
I think you need to motion that you're going to change the whole length at Haven Hill, and then I can change the amendment, and the next meeting you can approve it. If that's what you want to do.
Make that motion?
I'll make that motion that we change the speed limit from 35 to 25, the entire length of East Street, including Haven Hill.
Haven Hill portion that...
A portion that Clarendon has.
Is there a second?
There's no second.
Is there any further discussion?
Should we, uh, well, this letter is signed by, what, two people from out there? Should we get just a little more information from more neighbors out there prior to doing this?
Katie, you sent letters out to folks that lived in this section, right?
No, that is for the Kingsley Covered Bridge.
Oh, that's for the meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, we actually, a person, actually a couple people that I've talked to, they do activities the whole length of that road, and they suggested the whole length of the road, but they live down toward the Covered Bridge side of it.
Yeah.
But they were, I mean, they were talking, like I said, the whole road, and that's why I kind of pushed it, brought it up.
Well...
And I get, understand Bob's saying, yeah, we're talking about two residences here, but...
Plus, if we change the speed limit, there is a condition that people have 60 days to come in and discuss it.
Yep.
So why don't we keep, keep this moving along right now? It's been a motion made, seconded, but, uh, Bob, I hear your discussion, but I think that if we post this somehow...
Yeah, because one of, one of my concerns, if you think back quite a number of years ago, Mike, when we dropped speed limit in other places in town, the static that we got, in good shape, you know? I'll admit, it was a different area of town.
I would like to hear from, say, the Taylors, uh, or Spencer's.
Yeah.
And see what...
Yeah, I'd like to see us follow up before we go ahead and actually make the change. I would like to see us, uh, get a little more input from the people living out on that end of the road.
I like, I like the 60-day period. I mean, they can all be sent the letter too. Here's your chance to voice your opinion before we change it.
But, well, why don't we...
And Mike?
We'll table this.
There, there's something I, and I, I don't want to repeat, do a repeat, repeat, but with the slower traffic, we were actually, it don't create as much dust, and therefore we'll save more road, whether or not.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, looking at the townsite revenue and...
So there's been a motion made to do the entire thing, and seconded, we've had discussion. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so, um, the thing is, let's try and get in touch with some of the landowners over there. And Katie, if it's the case, uh, you know, this is an important move, so maybe we have to spend a couple bucks sending out a letter for input.
So contact landowners or homeowners from...
How many people live there?
I feel you spread, spread the word around to a few people, and then actually be talking to the neighbors and...
Especially this couple.
And actually, we could actually ask them if, if they had a little rough draft letter themselves, to have those people sign that, which way they'd like to go.
These people that sent us later, eh?
Uh, not only them, but other residents. I, I...
Yeah, no, oh, yeah.
Just talk to a couple, two or three residences up there. I think they will network to other residences, what we're discussing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're just around, that's for sure. That's for sure.
I like that.
And that'd save us with postage and...
Yeah.
Uh, our, our sister has quite a bit to do other than...
Yeah, I sent out 85 letters today in postage, so would you prefer that I call? Well, Heidi, is it possible for me to get phone numbers?
Yeah, it's just...
Like in a phone book? Like in a phone book? Is that the only way we get their phone numbers?
Yeah, or you can search online, online database, but you, you don't have that information online here at the town hall, so...
And we're looking at...
What was the cost?
25 bucks for postage, right there.
For Rutland Herald or for postage, or...?
No, for sending out letters.
Um, 85 divided by 2, because it's 50 cents a piece. So...
50 bucks?
Yeah, I think that area, a little under.
I just calculated it out. Same thing about that, but the time she has, I mean, preparing all that stuff.
Well, the letters are already prepared, right?
For the Kingsley Covered Bridge letters.
Yeah.
They got sent out today. But for letters for this, I don't know. I could just call them and tell them to send me their feedback.
I'd go for that. As far, and like I said, you talked to a couple people over there that will...
Yeah, we're going to get around real quick.
Get around.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, let's try that first. And...
Let's make it simple.
So we're not going to sign this, uh, which means it'll be put off for another two weeks. But, uh, Katie, I, I would suggest if we could try and get ahold of the people that sent this letter, and maybe they would do a little footwork too.
PR for us.
Yeah.
You can tell them it's the only letter we got, and maybe, uh...
Yeah, would be, we were considering south of the Bump Road, but, uh, the most concern was, you know, Covered Bridge to the Bump Road. And so before we go and enact any, um, policy or speed change, we'd like some other input too.
Yeah. You know, if you, if you had, uh, if you had even another five signatures on that letter, I probably wouldn't have no problem with it, but just a couple concerned me a little.
Basically, we'd all want two people ruling all the neighbors over there.
True. Well, I guess if you got ahold of Alderman's, uh, or Taylor, Kate knows everybody.
And Spencer's.
And Spencer's.
Spencer's. That word would get him real.
Oh, yeah.
Just...
Caboose.
And then this person that sent the letter, ask them if they can contact any of their neighbors or input too.
Mm-hmm.
And let us know by next meeting.
Sure.
Or come to the meeting.
That's as simple as you can get.
Yep, good. Anything else under...
The other thing we have, and, uh, the Kingsley Bridge, which had extensive, um, look-over from an engineer, Katie could actually do an update for that.
Uh, I haven't gotten any kind of report from an engineer, but V-Trans emailed us and wants to do a joint meeting with anyone involved. So I sent out, um, letters from Bump Road North, is that right, Mike?
Yeah.
Um, so that was about 85 addresses. Um, so on the August 10th meeting, V-Trans and, um, Hoyle, Tanner, and Associates, um, I think are going to be at the meeting, so...
Okay.
Cool.
And then I, I will contact, um, RRPC just to let them know, and if they have any way of publicizing it.
The thing is, when we contact people on this last issue, speed limits headed south Bump Road, might mention that, uh, make people aware that, uh, you know, that bridge may be closed, and that this is going to happen, a discussion is going to happen at our next meeting at the, uh, Community Center.
The highway report, I guess that's all I have for all this other questions.
Cash, I know you've been busy. You haven't done nothing, got them stop lines that we were talking about a couple of weeks ago.
No, I haven't.
Alright, whole business, fire alarm systems. Before you, you get too involved in that, I'm going to have to recuse myself from voting on that, because number one, one of the people, one of the bids, uh, I worked with at, when I was doing fire alarms, I worked with him for quite a few years, and obviously I know Royals too. So that being said, I would recuse myself from voting on those.
Are we actually approving that tonight, possibly either way, or disapproving, or we're...
I thought we were just going to have a discussion.
Just discussion, okay.
Yeah.
Because Matt's not here, though.
Right, I was hoping Matt would be here so that we can get some professionalism.
I'd like to see Matt, and if I recall...
Pardon?
I believe.
I sent this to Matt, but I never heard back from him. Um, I guess just the fire alarm systems, you were going to decide tonight if you had answers to your questions, because I was going to send in the safety grant. But if you want to wait, I can just wait to send in the safety grant, so... Well, so I, I believe you can actually, you can apply for the safety grant without having exactly, without it being decided who you're going to go with. You just have to send, so like, for instance, you know how like when we submit for paving, we send a copy of a bid, that might not be the bid that we end up going with, but that helps us to secure the grant. So I would still ask to approve the grant application tonight.
So we're for sure going to put one in?
I, I would.
I think it's, we've been required, haven't we?
Well, so Wade, um, stopped by last week.
Yep.
Right? Um, from, he's from the VLCT. And so we were able to ask him, Katie had sent him the bids and asked him if, if, uh, there was anything that he thought was overkill or anything that he thought, um, was missing. And he did have a couple questions, um, that I think need to just be sent out to the two bidder, to Royals and to Dave McKinnon, uh, for them to respond to, um, and Matt, of course, as well. Um, but other than that, his recommendation, because my greatest concern was, okay, so should we do them and try to figure out how to do them all this year, um, because we don't want our insurance to go up because of not having, you know, the liability being greater. And he said, no, his recommendation would actually be to do one building a year, and that way we could apply for this grant every year, and hopefully receive this grant every year. Um, so he also mentioned that, um, as of the week prior, so, um, like a week and a half ago, there was still money available for that grant to be funded, and highly encouraged us to apply for that grant. So I think that's something that you should move on, um, as far as applying for that grant, um, so that we can start, uh, looking at doing a building a year.
We still have copies of the bids right now.
Yep. So it, that doesn't, so again, I guess my recommendation would be to have Katie forward Wade's questions on to the people who put in the bids, right, Royals and Dave McKinnon. Um, and then at the next meeting, if we have those answers, you can then make your decision on who you would like to go with. Um, but in the meantime, I think you should approve that grant application, because we know this is something we need to do, so we might as well head in that direction. Um, yeah, and also like in talking with him, uh, we were talking about how maybe we would consider doing the town hall first, and then maybe next year, uh, consider doing maybe the community center and, um, have their board discuss that. And then maybe the following year, um, the town garage. So we also discussed, um, like, you know, if there's going to be significant work done down at the garage or something like that, timing of things and, and making sure that we're not doing something that we're then going to have to turn around because there's going to be...
Redo.
Well, I think the, the town garage one being the last issue, if you consider, in most cases, the guys are out working in the roads, right? Play in on this, Cash.
Yeah, I hear you on that, but if you look at the value of equipment...
Right.
Yes. Yes.
But, uh, the other thing, I've always wanted to fix that theme garage up, so.
You might have a different program down the road.
Right, so I'm thinking that, let's use our heads on this. We have two buildings that are already established. The town garage needs a, so, come the fall, this fall, maybe we could start putting money into a town hall, I mean, uh, town garage renovations.
We're, we're going to discuss that at budget time.
Right. So that's to Heidi's point, by having us consider, you know, we have a lot of public coming in and out of this building, a lot of public down in the, uh, library, that building, you know, the greens hall essentially.
What you're saying is, we have two established buildings that should be protected, much as possible, which I totally agree, which is the greens hall, or the town hall and the greens hall.
So I think in Heidi's suggestion, and ask, not that Katie has anything to do, to get in touch with these people, uh, and let them know what the recommendations were. Yeah, let's pursue that.
If that needs a motion, I'll make a motion for her to continue to apply for a grant for the town hall for this year.
Alright.
Um, I think that's actually on the menu, or on the menu, on the agenda for hotel and dinner time. Um, under new business as well.
Oh, sorry about that.
If, if it's the same thing.
And I already sent the questions to the contractors.
Right on it, man.
So, um, we have a plan on, under old business, on fire alarm system. Another new business, we also have, uh-
The grant.
The grant.
The safety grant.
Right.
Is that two different grants then? Or is this all the same?
The fire alarm system, we are going to make a decision on, and then the safety grant was new.
But we're not going to make the decision on which fire alarm-
Yeah, I can send both bids in.
Right. And, um, so why don't we?
You have to like approve it, and then I think you sign it, Mike, on the grant.
The grant, yeah, so are they asking for a motion? Even though we're jumping ahead here, are they asking for a motion to, uh, approve the s- uh, safety grant application and ask Heidi to send in these that are two applications we have, just so they could follow up and say, you know, how much money we could- So somebody want to make-
I'll make that motion too. Well, Mr. Chairman?
Alright, is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Alright, is there any further to discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, anyone not in favor? Alright, looks like it, so do you have that application I can sign?
Yeah, it should be in there.
Okay, so I, with that motion, that's just for-
Just for the grant?
Yeah, for the chair.
Yeah.
The sign, so you have to put that in the motion.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll add that to the motion.
I'll still second it.
Okay.
Well, about the motion I started.
Yeah.
I was going to say, you, didn't you start that?
Yeah, I did.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone disapprove? Oh, Lord. Okay, and, uh, with the traffic ordinance, we're going to put that off. Tax rate, Heidi?
Hmm, yes, sir. So in front of you, I have put two documents. Um, one is the, uh, tax rate information for homestead property tax rates.
Mm-hmm.
Education rate, the town tax rate, and the local agreement tax for your total tax rate for fiscal twenty-one, of homes that are non-residential. Um, and I'm proposing the taxes be due and payable Saturday, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty. That falls in line with how we've been doing it in previous years. Folks really seem to appreciate being able to come in on a Saturday, um, to pay their taxes, especially if they're working during the week. Um, for the same thing, uh, Saturday, October seventeenth. I also provided you with a side-by-side to compare last year's tax rate to this year. Um, one thing you'll notice, so the education tax rate provided to us by the state has gone up a little over five cents. Um, our town tax rate and our local agreement rate have gone down fractions of a penny, so it's pretty much, it's pretty even. Um, but still, we were able to keep costs pretty low. Uh, we're about the same anyways. So our total homestead property tax rate, uh, would be two dollars, or two point zero nine eight six, and our non-residential, or non-homestead tax rate would be two point one one five five. Um, to give you kind of an idea, uh, on a house, it would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That means that due to the education rate going up, your tax bill would be going up about eighty dollars.
Do you post this online at all?
We do, we post it online, um, and we actually, we also post it at the, uh, here at the town hall, in both this side and the other side, and then, um, I'm not sure if we posted it at the post, I think we might post it at the post office as well.
But honestly, we don't have any choice on this.
No.
Well, this is basically-
I would, um, go ahead and make the motion, we accept it as it is.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks, Heidi, that was good explanation. Nice job. Uh, do you have any other comments?
No, I'm still just working on the year-end reporting, kind of getting the, the next annual report information together for this next March. Um, if anybody has any questions, or would like to see anything, or if you would like a copy, anyone would like a copy of, um, the tax rate that was just approved, or the breakdown, the side-by-side from last year, more than happy to provide that. Um, oh, I also gave you a budget status, um, of where we stand as of right now. So I'm also happy to provide that to any member of the board.
Anybody have any questions for the treasurer? Not all, eh? Katie, do you have anything you?
Um, I'll be sending in the safety grant tomorrow, and, um, letters went out today about East Street, Kingsley Covered Bridge, and then I'll be posting that around town, the five different locations. Um, I guess it's up to you guys if you want that local concerns letter posted in the Rotten Herald or not. It's up to you.
And you're going to follow up with, uh, giving a couple people a call down that way, yep?
Yep.
Anybody feel like we want to put that in the Herald?
For that speed change, an extra speed change you're talking?
No, the-
For the meeting.
Covered Bridge.
Oh, for the Covered Bridge meeting?
Yeah.
Even my eight-five letters did just go off today.
Yeah.
And it will be posted at the five different spots.
I don't, I don't see.
I don't, I don't think the paper's necessary.
Uh-huh.
Cash, you have any concerns?
Nope, I'll say.
Up.
I'm good tonight.
Me too, you, Rick?
I'm alright.
I'd entertain a motion.
Don't move.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?